Up here. Okay, thank you, honey. Uh, no, this young man over here. You're about to preserve. Okay, is that all? We we're done with being them, but he. No, but we'll be getting in touch with you through Rosemary when we find out how we're gonna do the order and we want to include in that order. We we want to, Rosemary, we want to include in that order the contractor to do it. Uh, yes, sir. No, but where is that located? Yes, we're ready. You come on. Well, I didn't know.
They keeping it up?
No, it's a city. What people? They didn't they didn't come for nothing.
I had sent an email last night with some of the pictures you made. You may not have seen that. Just to get the picture in front of your mind what we're gonna talk about tonight. Uh, those of you who didn't see the office before Range Line, can you stand up, Adriana? We got two people here. Thank you. So, uh, my thing about the mountain bike community, you know, we have, you need no trace from Cali. We're gonna use the trail. When we go out there, walk the trail, ride the trail, we don't want you to know that we're there. Except you see a path, my two tiger marks, but that's it. Uh, we have trail builders here that have spent countless hours of their own personal time, their own equipment, uh, building these trails, maintaining the trails. Every time there's a storm, those guys are out there. Uh, just to give you an idea, we had one person spend six hundred and thirty hours in twenty twenty-two maintaining the trails. And without that, it just wouldn't operate. So, you know, in twenty twenty-three, he's already spent hundred and eighty-eight hours out there, so it's a big commitment. And, you know, they do that for us to ride out. Uh, you know, I heard Mr. Langdrum say that the guy that you hired tonight, you know, he wants to build Anderson. Ben is here from Bucksman Bikes. His business, uh, just revitalized a building downtown on Madison Avenue. He had a really small business, but he's turning into something big and huge for the city now. I encourage you to go by there. You've not been in there. It's pretty pretty cool. Shameless flood. But my my point would be, you know, Ben's business wouldn't be as successful without a good trail system. A good trail system gets people encouraged to mountain bike. Ben sells mountain bikes. He maintains mountain bikes. So, you know, it's an integral part of the community to have him successful. Okay? I also talked to Brian Bullhausen. He is the director of Dune Indiana Outdoors. Dino, they have the mountain bike series that has, I think, city races across the state. There have been events out at Range Line in the past. Uh, they had a adventure race. They had a Range Line rampage. The problem with the facility now, there's no electricity, there's no bathroom, so they're not on that regular circuit. And if Anderson wanted to improve, we get on that circuit regularly, you know, they might want to improve Range Line. So there's opportunity to bring people into the community, you know, with adventure races and other kind of activities. So, why we're here tonight? Safety of the riders and the people that use that trail system is at risk with what you've seen in those photographs. There have been campfires in the trail. There's been people out there wandering the trails that aren't necessarily, you know, out there to to use it recreationally. There's people camping out there. Uh, you know, there there's a whole issue about why people are there, why they're dumping trash, what are they collecting? I'm not the expert on that. So, uh, second concern is conservation. Range Line runs right along the White River. There's trash being dumped right by the river that could go into your water supply. So, uh, and again, you've seen the photographs, so you know what we're talking about. I encourage you guys, don't take our word for it. I tried to limit the photos of what I've seen and I talked to directly. Uh, the Assistant Police Chief went out there. We gave him a map. He didn't go far enough back into the trail system. He said, well, there's nobody there. That stuff is out there. It is a dumping ground right there.
And just to add, I mean, we're talking in the last month. That prior to that time, it's been a very clean place, the last thirty days, that huge influx, as you see in the pictures, of illegal dumping, uh, human feces everywhere. Uh, I mean, it's, uh, drug paraphernalia, drug use. And and you and you talk to these people and you and they will not move. They are right on the trail. So if I'm riding my bike going fifteen miles an hour, going in those woods, I'm encountering a tent with a guy like you. And who knows what else? But you guys gotta understand something too, Anderson, right? Range Line Nature Preserve is a little gem of woods where you can walk out, where you can see deer, balm, turtles, snakes, fish. And that little spot right there, that little, that just that little spot, okay? And in the last month, we've been out there, uh, riding our bikes scared, because I'm like, oh shit, am I gonna run into a guy that's on that? And then there is a guy out there on that. I know.
And Brian from from Dino wanted me to reiterate that, you know, that point that he just made with you guys. He said, you know, Range Line compared to a lot of the trail systems where Dino is on the circuit now is unique because it's within the city. You know, there's there's a couple of trails in Indianapolis that they don't ride, but, you know, you've got Mound State Park. If you bring activity to the city, people can camp there. So, you know, a lot of people can use that trail, and when you're in the middle of the trail system, you don't realize you're in the middle of Anderson. It it is you blocked there.
I'd like to say something to this because I have personally run, I run these trails, so I've run them by myself. Um, and this is, this is, um, I was, I would not, right now.
I was gonna say.
Um, but I, one time I was at Huntington University and I was at this get-together, um, because my daughter was thinking about going to school there. And I had her sit down and this guy, we just randomly got talking. This guy lived in Ohio. And he says to me something about, hey, I like the trails, bike, trail rides. I was like, oh, you have a picture of a trail. He's like, where at? And it's a Range Line trail. He goes, oh, I know that place. I've been there. So there are people coming from out of the state specifically for this trail system because it's listed on websites as one of the best trail systems that you can use. And this guy, I mean, this is from just a random guy in Ohio. It just happened.
Hey, all I had to add, um, you know, I just was, uh, I was at the Coward Mountain Bike Race in Ohio. To say people that don't really know Anderson, Range Line, I say, hey, I'm from Little Town, Indiana. My home base is Range Line. And that's worked out everybody. You don't find trails like that, right? You know, I mean, those are really, I mean, as far as maintenance and volunteers, it's top notch. You go to Prairie Creek, they have a trail system out there. There's nothing like that. Nothing. Nothing in Indiana.
Yeah, I just wanna add, uh, when I was doing research on on this homeless situation, uh, Supreme Court has ruled that we can't criminalize being homeless and people being on public land. But you can make laws if you have somewhere for them to go. So people have been advocating to get something done. Anderson, it has to have a place for people to go that are homeless, a shelter. That would have been a good, uh, proposal for some of this ARP money. Whether we like it or not, I would rather have a homeless shelter, emergency shelter, because then we can make laws against these type of situations. That's how other cities do it. Because you can, because, what'd you say? Laws. I know, well, they need to enforce those. But we can actually make laws to say they can't sleep there. Because a lot of them, a lot of people think that they, that's, uh, ACLU will say they can do that. The Supreme Court has said, no, you cannot. If we had, uh, somewhere for people to go and for them to enforce that law and say, here's where you have to go. We cannot allow this for safety, if nothing else. That is not safe.
So you're telling me I can get my tent and I can go stand out in this parking lot and not get anything bad to do?
Well, they they doing it and and.
I mean, I'm talking like right now.
Well.
We're talking about camping in the city. If we have, we have the park rules right here.
Well, that's that's what that's what we're saying. They are camping. I get calls all the time, businesses downtown that they promote and and giving this money to. Wait till somebody's sleeping on that porch. They just gave them people thirty thousand dollars. When they wake up and people camped out on that lovely porch out there. And and I've had lawyers call me and say, can't you do anything? And that's when I started researching. I said, why can't we have laws? Now, the clerks, do y'all recall any laws, uh, of people, uh, sleeping out on public ground? They had a woman taking a bath down down in the fountain down there and said, well, nothing they could do about it. And I'm saying, there is something we can do about it, but to enforce the laws and not get in trouble by saying this person had nowhere else to go. We need that. Yeah. But you want them to enforce what little law they got already.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, these park rules here, it says no campfires, no alcohol beverages, okay? We want to talk about drug use. It's obvious drug use out there all over the place. The evils where they.
Well, what did the police chief say? You say he went out there? What'd he say?
He did go out there, uh, and from my understanding, he was giving a map. He didn't go far enough back out on the trail. And for me, that's what the greatest area is here. He says there's nobody out there. So my point is, if there's nobody out there, if there's nobody living there, if there's nobody to event, let's work together and schedule a cleanup. Talked to David Ices at the Parks Department. He complained to me about his budget for me cleaning up trash. I said, you know, we've got volunteers. These guys spend seven hundred hours a year out there. We can get ten guys out there if the city will help us and allow us to clean it up, you know.
And what did he say?
Uh, he said, he said, we need to schedule that. And again, you know, I think they have a policy of whether or not they're going to pick someone, but you got the police saying that there's nobody out there. There's technically nobody to 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 pick, you know. I met Danny earlier. She was never given to us as a resource, and she explained to me an incident that happened here in town. We can have to go.
The homeless person basically ended up in a dumpster.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, well, all of him finished, but I want to say that these are people. They're not camping. They're living.
And and that's the thing.
All of him finished, but I'm definitely going to say that.
Our suggestion would be for you guys, to encourage the police to go out there at different time of day, late at night, early in the morning, for the minute people are really out there. If there's not anybody out there, let's clean the trash up.
Well, listen, uh, the council is the legislative body. We can make the laws. But what you're talking about, the enforcing the codes, the pu- the mayor appoints the police chief. He's the executive. He's the one that can.
Can you call him?
Can, he 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 ain't gonna answer if I call. So you might have to call. But this is, this is why we have elections. Elections in November, all this stuff going on. If 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 this administration say we're doing a good job and this is the best we can do and you don't think it is, that's why you'll have an option. And that's what I tell people, because I hear complaints every day.
And I didn't want to make this a complaint session.
Well, but it it, you know, it's something I've been talking about for, uh, eight years, ever since I've been up here.
And and obviously, tonight, we've heard lots of things about trash and you can pick up and area, we know it's a concern. I guess our point is, this is supposed to be a shared space. You mentioned earlier, you know, building Anderson for your children. Right now, you know, it's probably not safe to take your kids out there.
No, nowhere.
In a shared space.
I understand that. Well, uh, you're absolutely right. I've been on the trails. I I didn't even, I live a couple of blocks from the whole trail off of Eighth Street. I was born and raised here. I didn't even know that existed. I had a city employee take me on a tour. It was beautiful. But guess what? It wasn't kept up. It'd been neglected, and I could not believe it. I had to ask him where this preserve was. I forgot about that, being way out there. But that's something that school kids should be exploring.
Absolutely.
Uh, uh, I see Mr. McLendon and, uh, Donita out there. They work with at-risk youth. That's something I bet they've never seen before. I know I've never been out there, never. Born and raised right here and never been out there. So I understand what you're coming for, but talking about, but the mayor has the power and the money to do that.
That'll be our next step.
Well, power only backs down to more power. Now, you had a lot of people here, elections in November. If it's not cleaned up and not done, then then y'all know what to do.
And again, uh, you know, we we have reached out to police self-times. Again, I didn't want to turn this into, you know, a complaint session, but I think one of our guys filed seven different reports. Uh, so I I again, you know, if someone needs to return, if there are indeed people out there, and if there's not, we need to get agreement from someone to clean it up. Because we don't want to displace anybody. Obviously, we don't want to hurt anyone. It's not our intent. But we want to protect the trail system to keep riders walking safe.
Well, it's dangerous for you to be out there.
Absolutely.
Uh, in other cities, people have gotten killed. Uh, there's mental illness in- involved with, uh, people who are on the street and you don't know who's sick, who's on drugs, who's, uh, capable of anything, so.
And and I I did want to mention too, you mentioned Facebook earlier, and there's bad publicity out there right now on Facebook. Show some of these pictures. There's a lot of discussion about it, so we definitely, uh, leaving, you know, bad impression. There were a lot of people that might want to go to that trail, Jennifer mentioned, uh, you know, the trail rating system. People look on Facebook, people join our our groups if they see that there's a problem out there. I'm not gonna want to kind of interest them, so if it's unfortunate, care about it.
I understand that. And and the mayor should understand that too. Y'all friends with the mayor? Y'all think y'all could talk to him? Lance?
Somebody I get to play golf with and.
Uh, you too? No. You don't want to be my friend. Uh, these, hey, these two, these two guys, they they friends with him.
Yeah, I'm friends with everybody.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I'm Steve, so I walk the trail quite a bit.
Yeah, we're politics.
Uh, one thing that's not being considered here, that's all on the White River. It's all a flood plain. All those people are just one flood away from dying. I'm not exaggerating that. Where they're at is the spring floods and the summer floods can get three or four foot deep. And us not doing something is not doing them any good. We have to keep in mind, this is a flood plain. That's the reason that it was turned into a nature preserve, because it really can be used for a lot of other things. So please keep that in mind when you're, we're not just, you know, just saying things just to people. We do care about these people. But this is not a safe place for them, and it's not a safe, it's making it not a safe place for us to be.
I understand that, because it's not safe throughout the city. Uh, um, Ms. Tatum.
And, uh, so I want to make something real clear that homeless people are people. Homeless people need someplace to go. Um, when people don't have choices, then other people are afforded. So with that being said, I'm all for nature, right? But I'm also for people. I'm for people first. So, you know, the city of Anderson and, you know, this group or that group, you should not be going in there forcing people out of their home. That is not camping. And another man's junk is actually another man's trash. And like you said, there's other peo- there's people out there that have mental health situations and all of that. But please don't sit here, you know, and and think that these people have a lot of choices because they don't. If they had choices or better choices, many of them, I don't think, um, that was the first place that they said, oh, this is where I plan to live. This is where I I plan on raising my kids. But I don't think many of them said, and there are some people that want to be off the grid. We get that. But what I am saying, you know, I I just met Chris tonight. Um, Indy and I can plan on talking because I think there is a win-win-win situation. Um, because like I said, I'm all for the bikes. I'm all for the nature preserves. But I'm for people first. And as the Human Civil Rights Director, it is my job to make sure all people, including homeless people, are treated with dignity and respect. And yes, that was the Ninth Circuit that said, you cannot force people out of their home and there's no place else for them to go.
No plan.
And passing out papers to a group is, you know, like, you you're assuming that, one, everybody out there can read, right? And that's not a knock on them, but you assume that everybody out there can read, and that's not the case. Then you assume that everybody is mentally okay. That's not the case. So I think what we need to do is, and and Chris and I, like, we literally just met today. I had no idea about him. He was never directed to me. So he and I are going to have a talk, and we are going to work together like we should have been in the first place to figure out how we're gonna win, win, win for everybody. And again, homeless people are people. And I can't imagine having to pick out there to live, but at least it's running water. So if I needed a drink, I could drink it. If I needed to take a bath, I could take a bath. And oh my God, I can't even imagine having to use the bathroom, literally, out in public. So imagine how those people feel being placed in the predicament that they're in for a number of reasons. So with that, I'll be quiet, but again, I look forward to working with this man because, you know, it is a way to make it a win for everybody, and I am so not for throwing them out and there's no place for them to go.
Yeah, I, the throwing them out was never an option. Uh, the only thing I was talking, that I'm talking about is what I've studied and for even coming from the United States government, even their recommendation is housing first. We have to have a place for people to go. And.
I brought that up because, you know, I I heard a comment about having the police to come at different times of the night and throwing their stuff out. No, that I I pray that that does not happen. That is a violation.
That was my point. I just wanted to.
Right, right. I'm just saying, what I heard, and I will, you and I will talk later, but what I'm saying is, that that's people's property. And so you just put them another, they're already suffering trauma to come in and throw all of their life possessions because we think it's junk. That's even more traumatizing, and I've got statistics from California that speak to what I'm saying. So please don't have the Anderson Police Department to go out there at any time of day or night and walk out there and throw people stuff away.
Well, we have to have somewhere for people to go, period. And we even have, you might want to talk to Q about that. He has a a brilliant proposal, uh, for a shelter for homeless.
You know, Q, I, we know each other.
But so, did you show her that proposal you told me about for housing?
He knows what I do, but we can get together and we can talk.
So there are solutions. Housing is the solution. Uh, okay, so we got that. Okay, we done with that. Uh, one more thing. Uh, thank you, and keep us updated. We we, uh, one more thing. Where my paper go? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Melissa. I have everyone on the trail.
Okay.
And I don't want anybody displaced or thrown out. And the problem is, is that if I get nine or ten kids in three, they just scream in the mountains on the trail. They ask me to go out there and see a bit. I heard a child's voice, camera, screaming, help.
Oh, no.
I called 911. And I know those trails really well. We have mountain bikes on those trails. We got children, we have dogs out there. I knew exactly where it's coming from. The being is really rough out there. So I called 911, and I'm calling out this voice, but stay where you are. They're talking with us. And I'm like, I'm there to help, but the child is out in the woods. He's passing me. Nobody ever comes. So I went out there myself, thought that someone's coming, like my daughter. And I went out there and found them myself. I got out there on my forty-year-old phone, I didn't know where she was, and I went and traced her. Found later on. Um, it's been twenty minutes, and I get back out to my house. It's really dark out there. I looked crazy. We still weren't there. I got her water, I got my husband, and I got her ride home. Can't have a home. She goes to her uncle's, he said, we're leaving the house, running off with the generator, we're packing. She, uh, she said that wasn't something, but we know where it's at. And I called him, this, that, that, and I said, nobody ever came out there, so I stopped and I went and got the food.
Well, thank you for that.
Well, y'all say that, oh, the police don't come and there's trouble out there. But we call, we hear fighting, we hear women in trouble out there, I didn't miss that. It sounds scary. You're gunshot.
This is my district too. I just want you guys to know this is where this is at.
Checking with that?
I have, I, yeah.
Listen, the dead bodies being out in the nature, we don't want that anymore. Of course. Right? Nobody is safe out there.
Have you met with the mayor? Have you met with, did you tell him this story?
Uh, no, it's police officers. I had them come out to post, he was like, just come down and look and check things out. He had, they came out, soon as just about fifteen feet down the trail. And then he said to my husband, are you trying to trap me? Is this the war? That's what he said. And he refused to go down. And I was like, that's how I started here, going out and listening to them. And I thought, I still get it, because he's gonna leave somebody out there three months after he's out. And you guys never came. And I told the police officer that, he said, I don't want it. He said, it always come out. And it did. And I feel like he didn't come out because.
He ain't really.
Everybody knows, but please don't, okay, I'm in the nature. Everybody, that's like experiences every time. So how are they gonna come out and stand there and be nothing?
Well.
There's a woman that doesn't have. So, you know, it's not, we don't want, we're not like, get rid of these people. We're like, help. Nobody's helping. And it's not.
Well, Ms. Dixon, uh, you're in contact with her right now. I mean, Ms. Tatum, uh, contact with her office now. And that's what she deals with, and she, uh, is an appointee, uh, appointed member of the executive staff. So she is, um, with the administration, so she'll have a direct line to try to make sure that they're aware of all this going on. Are you, have you met with the mayor back there?
Every time there's a storm, there's branches that fall. I'm afraid to go out in my backyard because there's so many branches falling. But, you know, people can't like ride literally behind my, because I can't believe, there's all those branches falling. It's so dangerous. Very, so rainless. Where she lives is my district. That part of things is my district. Entrance to Range Line is technically the second district, so, so you have.
Okay.
But.
By the bridge, right.
Well, y'all met with the mayor?
West side of Rankin.
We're gonna have, like, people falling branches on them, right? Right outside my yard.
Okay. Okay, she said she's been messaging, uh.
Do you find some way to get help out there for the people?
Yeah, if it was in my power, yes, you would. But the mayor, that, like I said, that's an executive power duty. This is the legislative body. We write the laws.
I just want everybody to be aware that.
Right. So if something happened, then it's not like we didn't know anything about it. I I think you'll.
Nobody is safe out there. Mountain bike riders, anybody, when the police come from out there. It's not like we want people, we need to come out and hurt people.
Right. Okay, would you, I I understand what you're saying. Um, Mr. Orkut, he got a direct line to the mayor. You told the mayor about all this?
Mayor, my name's Ben Orkut, City of Anderson. Um, I have a contact, obviously, about this, and, you know, I tried to paint a pretty positive picture of this community, specifically for the customers that come in my store for encouraging physical activity outdoor, adventure, that type of thing. I went riding this morning to see for myself. I'd seen a lot of photos. I wanted to see this myself. I did not get halfway to Range Line before I encountered two people sleeping across the trail. Actually, I have a picture on my phone. If you want to see it, I decided to turn around at that stop, at that point. I'd warned another hiker who was coming back the other direction. This is city-owned property that this is happening on. And I also want to ask, we have like some kind of homeless commission, I believe. Are any of you all members of that?
No.
Greg Graham was on that and.
I was on with Greg.
Uh-huh.
I haven't been active for three years.
That feels problematic. Um, my, the part of the question I have too, you know, the timeline had been mentioned earlier. It hasn't really happened until about a month ago. My understanding is there was a large camp of homeless folks that had been swept out of that location. And given not much more than a slip of paper, giving them some phone numbers about places they could go. I want to ask the people who were in charge of that sweep what their best hopes for that situation were. What did they expect to happen besides people moving down the river?
Yeah, because, just so you know, some of those people are also.
Gilbert, yeah, Jameside, the trail there, that three-mile trail.
Oh, yeah, it's clearly a much larger issue than Range Line. It had just become.
Oh, no, that's just happened a little.
A bit more pertinent for a number of us, because we're encountering it so frequently. Can I ask, can that homeless commission please be, uh, joined back up?
So, I mean, the answer to that is, I mean, I don't have an answer to that, to be honest. But part of the reason it was disbanded was because the people that were highly involved in that were the people who are already dealing with the homeless. And they, from my understanding, again, so there are people that want to start this back up. There are people that were already doing that work. And they're like, we don't have time for a meeting to come to the city once a month at noon. And so if, that was my understanding and it just kind of dissipated. So I don't, I don't have an answer exactly why it stopped, but that was what my understanding was. They were already doing the work and it just seemed like they were getting frustrated, because then they were, like, they're doing their work and now the city is involved. And so the people that were, are doing that work, if they would like to start that again, then that.
I want to see the city do it. I want to see it initiated by this.
Right, but they've got to get those people that are.
Volunteer.
Right.
I mean, I think we could find a few more volunteers in this room.
But I want to work with the people that are already working with the homelessness situation. Those, I mean.
Yeah, well, yeah, they should be involved. Yeah, let's, let's do it. Let's, can like.
I, I don't want to be rude here. Because I'm just telling you, they, that was, I want the people that are doing the work, they did not have time to come to the city to, to do something that they're already doing. And so.
But we're not, I mean, well.
So I.
Well, we could, we could possibly go to them. Uh, the information I got, uh, the bottom line being was the reason why, uh, it kind of disbanded, you got to have cooperation from the city. Now, this body, we have a budget and we can take, uh, uh, Councilor Dixon says we can get money out of the general fund by order or a resolution or, uh, ordinance. But we have to have buy an ordinance. We've got to pass an ordinance to create this and give it some money to do things that need to be done to, uh, solve some of these problems. Like I said, the number one, uh, solution or the number, one thing at the top of the list is shelter. You got to shelter people first.
Yeah.
Like you said, you can't give them a piece of paper, tell them to go down the street. You got to have, hey, you've got to go down. Here's where you got to go. And then you, once you've sheltered them, then you can start finding out, do they need mental health? Do they need?
We also, entities outside of this community that send folks here.
Yes.
And we all know that. But I'm not sure that anybody who has the power to do anything about it is doing anything about it. And that is not a citizen's job. That is.
No.
The county sheriff, maybe. That is the police department. I'm not sure who it is. But we have to prevent this.
It's the executive. That's why it's called Executive of the City, the mayor.
Uh, Ms. Councilor Coe, was that commission ruled inactive?
I don't, I don't, I don't know that answer. Yeah, they just kind of, it just kind of dissipated.
My point is that if not, uh, been abolished and it's just been inactive, it doesn't take nothing but consent from the council and the mayor to reactivate any commission that has previously functioned. So it's to find out if what happened. If you, maybe you could, first, you can look at that and see when the last time they met or have it been.
I would never have any, any minutes.
Jennifer, do you have?
Like, I'm talking.
I can look it up.
Are y'all saying it don't have history?
Hey, listen, listen. It would be on the City of Anderson.
We ain't gonna just talk all night.
No, but I think if there's a history there of this beating community development, because that's where Greg Graham worked and that's what he.
Well, we need to find out. Unless everybody put the money where the mouth is at, we're not going to speak all night.
I heard the initiative as well. We, he did a, a dollar a pay and was supposed to help all the feeding the homeless around here. And that was.
Well, let's see if you can.
That was homeless.
If those that's involved can find out if that commission still exists.
It, it is mine, yes. And so, yes, I will also help be a part of whatever it is.
So if you want to name a committee, you can do that right now.
Oh, uh, sure, uh, the council, uh, can do that. President, we, we can do that. But let's find out if we can get any history of those that was once on it. And, and that could be done maybe immediately.
Like Greg and I, and then it was like Operation Love, the Christian Center. It was the people that are in this. Doing this.
You may be.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, all those that are involved with homelessness, um, they are at the table. So, yes, we can look into that and I'll also be a part of that, because, you know, there are certain laws, um, to protect people. So I want to make sure that the homelessness, you know, not only is free to go there, you know, and, and make sure and all that. We get there, but also want to make sure the victim empowerment is at the table.
I agree.
I'll be a part of that, which is.
Yeah, I agree. We can't just kick them people out of there.
Counselor Stevenson.
So what we need to do, Greg Graham, Greg Graham is running from the third district. He's unopposed. You can call Greg Graham and get some input for him tomorrow.
Councilor Stevenson.
Real, real quick, I'm just, I'm just changing the topic, real quick. We had one, were you on, were you on the Arpa homeless committee?
Yeah.
Were you?
What?
Were you on the homeless Arpa committee?
No.
No, no, that's, that's free.
Okay. The only thing I'm saying that is.
You got some free.
They have one applicant and one was a two million, do you remember what it was? Ten?
It was nine hundred thousand.
Whatever. Yeah. I'm saying, I don't know anything about that, that Arpa committee.
Homeless, but yes.
I'm pretty sure you're correct.
Yeah.
Is this still open? Is Arpa homeless thing still?
No. No, that, that deadline's passed.
So you're going to research that?
Well, unless it.
I don't have to make a research. I don't know what, I don't know.
All right, now we're getting crazy.
Yeah, all right.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Stevenson, did you have something to say?
No, no.
Okay, you done? Y'all, okay, you may have to take the mic. We have somebody want to speak.
My name's Michael Paul. I'm a parole user. I volunteer one time. I'm going to die out there. I don't want to take care of the night. And compared to the, uh, the community use, um, we talk about the folks that are out there that need help. We talked about morning committee, not helping him. We need to help him bow. If you would be an advocate for them, I would be happy to take you out, to show you where they're at. I'll walk me out there and lead them, talk with them and start the conversation and have them help.
And, and, yes, I just managed to get through today after we recorded after the conference. We get by, but I have to go out on my own shore. And that I would be a first to start, but can people have a place?
And I would suggest that, Jennifer, if you would.
I cannot. I am on two Arpa funds, Ollie. I cannot do anything else. I mean, I.
Is there anybody, any other advocates here that want to get out there and go with?
Oh, I mean, I'll go out there. I go out there. Like, yeah.
I mean, we just sat here, we're not going to talk about something. Nobody.
Okay.
Rebecca, are you going out there with me?
Are you?
Yeah, I'll be, I'm sorry, I'm reading something. I'll, I'll be able to go out there if you guys.
Okay, that's part of his district and Jennifer's district. Uh, is Rosemary still here? Uh, I did want to make a quick announcement to the council and if you have anything to add. Rosemary is meeting with, uh,